Hey, good morning, everyone. I'm calling to order the September 21st, 2023 meeting in the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, noting the presence of all three commissioners, and I'm going to ask Mr. Rob Henry to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to start this morning by acknowledging the sudden and tragic passing of a Montgomery County native, Joanne Epps, who was serving as president of Temple University. Joanne Epps grew up in Sheltonham Township and graduated from Sheltonham High School in 1969. She received her bachelor's degree in 1973 from Trinity College and her law degree from Yale University. Joanne began working at Temple University in 1985 as a professor in the law school, where she became dean in 2008, and in 2016, she was promoted to provost, the number-two position at the university. Joanne was a leader in the legal, academic, and business communities, and served as a friend, mentor, and advisor to countless students and administrators. Her loss will be felt deeply, not only by the Temple University community, but our entire region. So I want to extend my heartfelt personal condolences to her husband, L. Harrison J., and her family, and I'd like to ask us to observe a brief moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. We have some events going on in the county this week and in this month. The Third Annual Arts Monco Week is underway through October 1st. You can celebrate all the tremendous arts that Montgomery has, Montgomery County has, available by supporting local theaters, galleries, museums, gardens, and more. And the Second Annual Monaco Jazz Fest kicked off yesterday and runs through September 24th. Jazz Fest celebrates Montgomery County as a music destination, and this year's theme is "Women in Jazz." There are multiple performances in diverse venues throughout the county, and for more information about Arts Monco Week and Monaco Jazz Fest, please visit www.vallyforged.org. Next up, another event that's taking place on September 30th is the Montgomery County Hero Fund. They'll be holding their annual 5K Brews and Barbecue Event at the Lower Providence Fairgrounds. In addition to the 5K, there will be a Beer and Music Festival and a First Responder Barbecue Competition. The Montgomery County Hero Fund does an awesome job of supporting the families of first responders in our community, and if you're interested in the event or learning more about the foundation, please visit www.montgomerycountyherofund.org. And finally, I'm pleased to announce this month's Way to Go Monaco winners. The Way to Go Monaco program is open to all county employees, encouraging them to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than 200 county employees have submitted nominations, singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw employers from the list of nomination, and each wins $150 in recognition of their work. So here are this month's winners. Michelle Smith, who is a child line coordinator in the Special Victims Unit of the District Attorney's Office. Her coworkers say Michelle learns quickly, takes directions well, and asks questions appropriately. On a typical day, she can see quietly and efficiently handling tasks in our fast-paced, high-volume environment. She plays an essential role in keeping children safe in Montgomery County. Next, we have Sandra McCoy, who is the Assistant to the Senior Assessment Analyst in the Board of Assessment and Appeals. One of her coworkers says she knows how to do nearly everyone's job and is always willing to fill in when we need help. Her hard work and dedication to Montgomery County is admirable, and she is also one of the kindest people I've ever known. Our third winner is Eric Cooks, who works in our Building Services Division of Public Property. One of his coworkers says Eric is such a dedicated employee. He is in the office bright and early every day with a positive attitude. He is also hard at work, much of it physical, and often lends a helping hand. Eric leads by example and is a true asset to the county. Next is Marie Bean, who works as a juvenile clerk in the Clerk of Courts. Her coworkers say Marie generally cares about the work she is doing. It's hard to find people to work with who are great at their jobs, have shining personalities, and are always willing to go the extra mile. Marie is all the above. Her nominator said that their department is far better because of her. And our fifth winner this month is Faith Renner, one of our Park Rangers for our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites Division. Her nomination says, "In June of this year, Faith handled a high-stress situation at Green Lane Park involving a woman who was unconscious with ease and urgency. She listened to those around her and helped where she could. Faith helped save a life that day." So I want to sincerely congratulate all of our Way to Go Monaco winners for September. Thank you for the work that you continue to do for the residents of our county. And that concludes my comments. I'll hand it over to Commissioner Wender.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Lawrence, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm excited to share some great news about some recent grants that Montgomery County has received to help our programs have an even greater impact on our communities. First, the Department of Health and Human Services secured a $4.4 million, five-year cooperative agreement from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention through its Overdose Data to Action Program. This grant represents transformative opportunity to strengthen the ongoing efforts in combating the overdose crisis and reducing overdose-related harms. With this grant finding, our county will be able to access the advanced tools and resources needed to collect, analyze, and use data to more effectively combat the overdose crisis and reduce overdose-related harms. I applaud our HHS team for their dedication to securing opportunities like this, which makes our taxpayer dollars work stronger and stretch further. Additionally, our county also received a $45,000 grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry to support our digital literacy efforts. Led by our Department of Commerce, this grant will support Monco Works, Montgomery County's Local Workforce Development Board, to run the four cohorts of foundational digital literacy programming, conducted in partnership with Full Circle Computing. Each of these three-week sessions will help career seekers from across the county receive free, comprehensive digital literacy classes. This is the second round of digital literacy grant funding for Monco Works and Full Circle. In the past year, the grant-funded sessions that supported over 40 career seekers. I look forward to seeing Monco Works continue this successful program and help more of our residents receive the skills to enhance their job opportunities as well as outcomes. Finally, I'm proud to share that Montgomery County Planning Commission received a $30,000 grant from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, or DCED. The Planning Commission has been diligently working on our new comprehensive plan for the county, known as Monco 2050. Planning will use this grant to specifically target communities that have historically been left out of the planning process and diversify the ways we can reach out to a broad variety of stakeholders. Through this grant, we'll be able to collect more diverse voices representing the county's 860,000-plus residents. Congratulations to the Planning Commission for its dedication to equity and inclusion in the strategic and long-range decisions for our community. Anyone who wishes to engage in discussions about planning can do so by visiting our Monco 2050 website at montgomerycountypa.gov/Monco2050. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Joe? Okay. We will now move on to announcements and presentations and reports. And first up, it's Transportation Demand Management Week. And we have, I guess, Mr. Edmonds, are you kicking it off and then turn it over? Okay. Mr. Matt Edmonds.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Good to see you. So TDM stands for Transportation Demand Management. Sounds like an imposing acronym, but it's actually a very simple idea. The capacity of our roads to move people is finite. And if everyone drove everywhere, especially by themselves, we could be pretty much gridlocked. So rather than trying to endlessly manage the supply of our roads, TDM takes the opposite approach of managing its demand. So this is accomplished in practical terms by providing people with alternatives to driving alone, such as walking, biking, carpooling, taking transit, working remotely, and more. So GVF Transportation and the Partnership TMA have been on the front lines of TDM for over 30 years. They are the bridge between the public sector, who sets transportation policy, and the private sector that employs those legions of employees who commute every day. And so every day, they work with corporations, they work with municipalities and others and various partners to create TD options, TDM options, for the county's workers and their residents. So Rob and Jackie are here today to explain how TDM contributes to our county's quality of life and why it deserves to be recognized by our county government. Please welcome them. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. Jackie, Partnership TMA of Montgomery County. I'd just like to share a few examples of the work that we do, in case you're not familiar. Because as Matt said, you know, we're on the ground here in the grassroots, actually helping people to find these transportation options. Through our travel training program, for many years, we've worked with young adults with disabilities to travel, to find their options to travel independently. This may be by bus, by train, by bicycle, by adapted vehicles, Uber and Lyft. Whatever it is, they need to be able to find safe alternatives to driving. So that has been done in conjunction with numerous schools within the county, and we're very proud of the work and the accomplishments that this program has achieved. We've worked with Monco Works and provided workshops for job seekers, again, to help them access transportation options, and this has had some great results. As many people are not familiar and very often uncomfortable with using some of the options that are available to them. So being able to help people become more comfortable and familiar with the transportation is essential. We've worked with the Community Connections Teams of the county. They have many clients who don't understand how to get around once perhaps they no longer can drive or have never been able to drive. So we've got close connections with the teams there. And during COVID, we worked with the Office of Senior Services, and we were a key bridge, as Matt mentioned, to getting seniors' rights to the county's vaccination sites through the Go Go Grandparent Program. So those are just a few examples. Currently, we're working with many, with several of our local chambers of commerce. We're working with the Indian Valley Chamber of Commerce, and next week, we'll be bringing together employers from the Indian Valley to look at ways in which they can craft some TDM solutions, given the lack of transit out in that region. And ongoing, and for several years, we've ran many bicycle-related programs through Better Biking in Monaco, most recently with our colleagues at GVF through the Bike More, Drive Less Project, where we're aiming to actually have municipalities place a priority on bicycling infrastructure to make it safe and accessible for everyone to take a bicycle as a means of transportation, not just recreation. So that's just a few highlights of what we do. Unfortunately, we're not a highly recognized nonprofit in the area, but this year, for all of our bicycling work, we were recognized by the National League of American Cyclists and awarded their Gold Level Award as a bicycle-friendly business. And to put that in perspective, only five other businesses in the state of Pennsylvania have been awarded the Gold Level Award from the league. So thank you for your time.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me. And thank you for recognizing TDM Week. Once again, I'm Rob Henry, Executive Director of GVF. Wanted to thank Commissioner Lawrence for serving on the GVF Board of Directors as well. And I want to thank the Montgomery County Planning Team, I know a lot of them are in Scott and Matt, for their support of GVF and TDM initiatives over our 30-plus years. So TDM Week is a national initiative. There are events going on across the country, and actually, Canada this year, celebrating TDM and working with programs throughout. There was an event in Philadelphia earlier this week, an event in Washington, DC that I attended earlier this week as well. And the state of Pennsylvania is actually the first state. They provided a proclamation this year from Governor Shapiro to support TDM Week, so that was wonderful to see. So what it, you know, we kind of heard a little about what it is, what it does, and the way we look at it is we're trying to inspire mobility choices for all. So you should have an ability, if you want to walk to work, ride your bike to work, you want to work remotely, whatever it may be, you should at least have that option. And we try to work with communities and companies to recognize that. So some of the things we've worked on in the county, we're working currently on some bike lanes and crosswalk enhancements. Whitpain Township just put in some permanent bike lanes that we've worked with. We manage shuttle systems, so in Upper Marion Township, they've run a local community shuttle since 1999, and we've managed it since that time, and that allows students to take the bus, it allows employees to take the bus, it allows seniors to age in place and continue to have mobility options within their community. We also manage corporate shuttles, so GlaxoSmithKline out in Collegeville, they connect to Regional Rail and other Septa Transit Systems, and we serve as that kind of last-mile connector where transit doesn't fully connect. We're also working, we've worked on TDM studies. So in the Fort Washington Office Park, we've worked with them as they were rezoning the entire park to look at what does that look like in the 21st century, and how do we make it more walkable, livable, and a community-oriented park while still enhancing the economics of Upper Dublin? We recently worked with Lower Marion Township to develop a TDM ordinance and plan for their entire community. So as any plans come in in the future, they look at how are people getting to and from those existing sites, any expansion, any addition to the community, which helps to plan out the future of that community. We're also currently working with Montgomery County Community College in Pottstown and with Pottstown Borough on a mobility hub, which is connecting different transportation options at that site. And we're working with school districts, because it's hard to change adults' habits. Once people are driving alone, it's very difficult to get them out of their cars. So we're working with kids to get them to walk to school, to ride their bikes to school. So right now, we're actively working with Springford and Upper Dublin school districts. So lots of great things in the county, lots of good things with TDM, and we'd like to thank you again for your support of it, and thank you again.
I want to thank you both for being here. I want to make special note of Mr. Henry's, is that a bus lapel pin that you have there? Or is that a shuttle? Portland Lightroom. Very good. Thank you both for the work that you do in the county, and I am familiar with Partnership TMA and the work that you do as well. I know you both work closely with our Planning Commission, but also with our local governments. It's a critical quality of life issue, not only in Montgomery County, but everywhere. So we're happy to recognize it, but we're happy to have TMAs here in Montgomery County working on the issue. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here.
I also would like to thank you all, as Commissioner Lawrence said, the college-wide aspect to the hard work you do each and every day for our residents here that have to commute to work, but also from an economic standpoint, creating access to major employment hubs across the county. You've done a great job over the years, and I'm grateful.
Next up, we have a recognition for our Urban Search and Rescue Team, and Joseph Dishler is going to lead that.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Joseph Dishler, and I've had the honor of being the task force leader for the Montgomery County Urban Search and Rescue Team since 2016. On Friday, March 24th, at approximately 4:50 PM, an explosion occurred at the Palmer Chocolate Factory located in West Reading, Berks County. The force of the explosion caused a major collapse of the initial building and significant damage to the adjoining structures. Local emergency services responded immediately, engaging in fire suppression and service-level rescues. After several hours of operations and reports of people still missing, Berks County officials contacted the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety requesting technical rescue resources. Shortly after 9:00 PM, the Montgomery County Urban Search and Rescue Team was dispatched to support rescue efforts. The USAR team is comprised of 31 part-time employees who are highly trained in technical search and rescue operations. On this night, we sent four apparatus and 13 of our rescue specialists. Upon our arrival, we were immediately tasked to complete search operations of the collapsed building and provide structural assessments of the adjoining structures that posed damage to our rescue operations. Our members were divided into two squads and began search operations. Based on the way that the structure collapsed, there were varying conditions that our squads had to contend with, from areas of dense rubble and building debris to varying sizes of void spaces. Search operations were carried out while fire was still actively burning, adding to the already difficult task. Utilizing specialized equipment and techniques, our members worked the rubble pile, lifting and moving, cutting and shoring properties to make sure that they could enter void spaces that are normally not entered under normal situations. But also knowing at the same time, while they enter these spaces, they could have a secondary collapse and possibly become a victim. Shortly before 2:00 AM, roughly eight hours after the explosion, members on Squad Two located what seemed to be just another one of these void spaces. But while they started removing equipment to get to that access, they realized it was a lot larger than most of the others that have been recently identified. They hailed into the space, no different than they were doing prior to this on all the others, and this time, they heard what they thought was a faint cry. Without hesitation, these members lowered themselves 14 feet down into this unknown space, which ended up being filled with waist-deep water. Hailing in to confirm the voice, they began to climb towards the voice under all the unsupported I-beams, conduits, concrete blocks, industrial racking and equipment, while two stories of building debris were unsupported above them. As they moved 20 feet farther into the dark, away from their only exit point, they hailed again and heard the response of the voice, now coming from the right-hand side. Using their helmet lights to see between two large metal tanks that were 18 inches apart, they located a female subject that was 16 feet farther away from them, up to her shoulders in the rising water. Rescue Squad Officer Mahan worked his way into the narrow space, supported by Specialist Myers, to gain access to the female subject. He worked to free her legs that were pinned below the waterline, while at the same time cooperating with our medical specialist, Ryan Overberger, to provide emergent care and updates on her condition to command. The team carried her over and under all the debris through the water to return to their entry point that was nearly 25 feet away from where they entered. While this operation was being executed below the pile, Squad One, operated by RSO McIntyre, along with other local fire agencies and state K-9 resources, were clearing a path to allow for safe transport of the survivor across the pile where medics were to be awaiting them. In less than 20 minutes from when USAR heard the voice, she was in the care of medics and being transported to the hospital. With our members' adrenaline levels pumping and for their safety, we called all USAR members off the pile to rehab, since they've been working with no breaks up until this point. We watched our members sitting on the curb lines, sitting on the bumpers of fire trucks on a cool March night, soaking wet, dumping water out of their boots after making what is known as a once-in-a-lifetime rescue. Shortly after 3:00 AM, without hesitation, our members were back on the pile, searching for others still reported to be missing. These members continued to work until 6:45 the next day, locating one of the seven that did not survive before being relieved by the state team. Because of the actions of our members, a woman is alive today. I could not be more proud of our team, and I deeply appreciate the continued support of the Department of Public Safety and the confidence of the commissioners that enables us to deliver essential emergency services to the residents of Montgomery County and surrounding communities. Thank you.
I'm actually going to ask everyone to rise except for the Search and Rescue Team, and let's give them another round of applause. Mr. Dishler, Joe, thank you for being here today. Thank you for sharing with us, and thank you for your leadership of the team. I know that that was a horrific situation in Berks County. I talked to Commissioner Leinbach from Berks County. He's grateful for your efforts as well. And you mentioned for Montgomery County, but this wasn't even, this was across county, which is great, which is great. How many hours was the team?
Nine. We were relieved at 7:30, so from 9:00 PM, we got dispatched to 7:30 the next morning.
Thank you all for always being there, once in a lifetime, but for that one life. It's amazing what you all do, so I commend you. Thank you for being here. Joe, thank you for your leadership of the team.
Thank you.
Yeah, kudos to all of you, you know, in answering the call. And, you know, I know you all have families at home that you need to come back safely to and for you to put your lives on the line, you know, for our fellow neighbors. I really appreciate that. And I have to give a shout out to our, East Narten's very own Eric Myers, who works for the Narten Fire Company. I know his body of work from being in East Narten, but to see him on this team and all of you makes me really proud. So thank you for your service.
And I too can't thank you all enough for your commitment and dedication to protecting and rescuing residents in Montgomery County and beyond in the most challenging circumstances. It's remarkable. And your bravery and fearlessness is second to none, and you're all local heroes, and may God bless you in all your efforts.
All right. It is National Recovery Month, and we have Charles Clark here. He's the Program Coordinator for the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Drug and Alcohol. Mr. Clark, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for, thank you, commissioners, for having me. Like Commissioner Lawrence just said, September is National Recovery Month, and it is a time for us to recognize the recovery community and the tremendous work they're doing to, you know, create pathways to recovery and help folks who are still struggling with substance use disorder. It's also an opportunity to increase awareness about substance use recovery and educate ourselves, and particularly celebrate the folks who are out there working hard to maintain their recoveries. It is a Herculean task sometimes, and it's a day-by-day effort. So, yeah, if we can give a shout out to those folks. Today, I want to talk about our recovery support services, just a few of them. For starters, our Letty Project. So Letty is a statewide initiative here in Monaco and across the state. Montgomery County was actually the 10th county to implement it. And what it is, is the Law Enforcement Treatment Initiative. Instead of locking individuals up for, you know, suffering from the disease of addiction, they are given a pathway to recovery via treatment services. Then we have our Warm Handoff Project, and this began in 2019. Our county hospitals, God bless you. Our county hospitals try to divert folks to treatment when they present with substance use disorders. COVID really hit this program hard, because one of the most vital parts of this project is the certified recovery specialists who create this pathway. We have slowly begun to increase these numbers, and it has been successful. And I'd also like to talk about Operation Rebound. This is a program here in Narstown. It is a collaboration between the Narstown Police Department and one of our providers called Denzia. What we do is a certified recovery specialist goes out and does street outreach with the Narstown Police Department. What I like most about this is the culture is shifting from punitive to our police department becoming a pathway to recovery, right? Today, we have Jamal with us. He is our street outreach specialist. And I just want to recognize the tremendous work he does. And also located in Narstown is the Montgomery County Community Center. It's at 601 Decap Street. And the Community Center offers certified recovery services. They hold support meetings and meetings, and they hold certified recovery specialist training for certification. They were recently selected as a recovery hub from the state, and they will help expand recovery-oriented systems of care. Next, please. Now, here are some of the events. The Montgomery County Recovery Center kicked off Recovery Month with an International Overdose Awareness Day. Events held at Family Dollars throughout our county. During this day, 38 boxes of Narcan were distributed in Lansdale, Narstown, and Pottstown. So that would be about 72 or so doses. In total, since 2015, our county has distributed nearly 22,000 doses of Narcan, and it has really made a difference. Next, please. And these are photos from our Lights of Hope event held last year. This event is held in Narstown. It used to be at the courthouse, however, due to construction, we will be having it at the Elmwood Park Zoo. Next slide, please. I invite you all to come out to that. That'll be next Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. It is a chance for us to remember the folks that we lost due to substance use disorder, but it's also a time for us to embrace the recovery community and all the work they're doing. but it's also a time for us to embrace the recovery community and all the work they're doing. Other events that are still to come are our Monco Walks, which will be from ten to twelve on September thirtieth. They will be starting out at the Recovery Center on Decap Street. Please join us.
Mr. Clark, thank you for being here, Jamal. Thank you for being here as well. It's so important to recognize this, not only this month, but every day, to remove the stigma from this. We all have, it touches us all. And the work that you all are doing are quite literally saving lives as well. So I want to thank you for sharing these events with us, but thank you for the work you do year-round.
And I'd like to thank you, Charles. We've had many conversations about the challenges that are facing those dealing with substance use disorder. And thank you, Jamal, for being on the front lines. I can attest to how difficult it is working with those that might be struggling with addiction. It's affected my family in more ways than I would like. And so I have a sense of understanding and care for the work that you do. And, you know, it's an opportunity to really think of new ways to support those and their families that are in active recovery and still struggling. So thank you both for the work that you do every day. I know it's hard work.
I'd like to wish you well with the Lights of Hope Event next week. I've attended that ceremony several times. It's very touching to those families that lost loved ones due to overdoses. And I know it means a lot to those families. So thank you for the work you do over the course of the year to help those in need.
Thank you for all of your support throughout the year. And next up, Jane Stein from Workforce and Development Research to talk about Careers of Tomorrow.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having me. I am here, like you said, to talk about Careers of Tomorrow. The main mission of Careers of Tomorrow is to address the talent pipeline for employers in Montgomery County. And the goal is to connect residents to current and future in-demand occupations. Next slide, please. This year, we were fortunate enough to be able to expand the Careers of Tomorrow brand through our Careers of Tomorrow Connections Fair, which we held last week at the Montgomery County Community College. This is also in alignment with the PA Career Link statewide awareness campaign to bring awareness to the services that are available throughout all of the PA Career Link locations in the state. It also happens to be Workforce Development Month. And the intention of this event was to bridge the gap between career seekers that were ready to work and employers that were ready to hire. It was structured pretty much like a standard job fair, but there was a twist this time. We offered career seekers the opportunity to attend a three-part series of preparation workshops where they could work on their resume, their interviewing skills, develop an elevator pitch, and create really a profile that they could show to employers. And likewise, we were giving, we provided the employers with the career seeker profiles ahead of time so they knew who they were going to be meeting at the event. Next slide, please. We had over a hundred and fifty career seekers and forty-two employers and organizations. It was a really great turnout. We were happy to see an in-person event with such high numbers. And we got great feedback from both employers and career seekers. I was talking with a gentleman on the way out who said that he had more interviews in the past three weeks since he attended the workshop on developing an elevator pitch than he had in his entire time job searching. So it was great to see. I think we've established that as a best practice moving forward that we will look to do anytime we have a job fair like that or any other local hiring events for specific employers. And our Careers of Tomorrow Student Expo, which is an annual event, is occurring October 24th at the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center in Oaks. And this event last year had over nine hundred attendees, and that is students, parents, and educators that have the opportunity to network, learn, and explore from a multitude of employers throughout the county, get hands-on experience through activities that the employers plan, explore career pathways in all the different industries that are represented, and really get a chance to see what is available to them in Montgomery County. And then for the exhibitors, last year, we had eighty-five employers and exhibitors. Next slide, please. That had the opportunity to share, teach, engage, and connect with those students, parents, and teachers, and really get to give the firsthand experience of what it really takes to work in that industry, in specific occupations, to give the youth a better idea of what they should be planning for in the future. And when we're looking at what we're identifying as the Careers of Tomorrow, and when we're looking at which employers, from which industries we want to invite to these events, we have to look at the data. So we have access to lots of information from the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industries Center for Workforce Information and Analysis. So we started off by looking at the industries. What are the most prevalent industries right now in Montgomery County by average employment and also by establishments? You can see there's a little bit of variation between the current employees and the current establishments, the order of the top five. But then we also wanted to look at what the industries are looking like for tomorrow, what the projections are looking like. So we take a look at the total projected employment and then also the total percent change. And that is just to show the amount of expected growth that we're anticipating over the next ten years. So doing all of that, and then looking at also wages, educational requirements, we developed the Careers of Tomorrow. So we have twenty-five on the next slide that are what we have established as the Careers of Tomorrow in Montgomery County. They represent all kinds of industries. But what they also do is they give folks the understanding of what is currently an in-demand occupation. We set a limitation for how many current employees there were in those fields, what is expected to have growth, what is expected to have a livable wage, realistic educational requirements, and came up with these twenty-five occupations. Next slide, please. And then with those twenty-five occupations, we put together a publication called the Careers of Tomorrow Guide. Each of the twenty-five are listed in this guide, and they have their own profiles, which includes a brief paragraph about what the occupation entails, what the education, training, and experience requirements are, and what types of industries they lend to most frequently. And that is in line with those major sectors that we talked about earlier. It also talks about the earnings because that is an important part of what people are looking at when they're deciding what their career pathways are going to be like. And then each page also includes a QR code that takes the scanner to a website called Career One Stop, where they can watch a video on what the day-to-day of that specific occupation is like. So again, they can get a real-world expectation of what they would be planning for. In our next publication, which is scheduled for next year, we're expanding on that a little bit. We're going to have two pages per occupation. The one page is going to stay pretty much standard to how it is now, but the second page is going to go more in-depth with the career pathway of that specific occupation. What kinds of jobs lead up to that point? What kind of jobs they can look to progress through after that point? And the earnings for all of them. And then if you are interested in the Careers of Tomorrow Expo in October, unfortunately, registration is already closed for schools. We are at capacity, but we do still have spaces for parents and educators that would like to attend. There is a link on the screen there for you. And also, we are looking for more employers and exhibitors to register, and there is a link there for you as well. That QR code on that screen will take you to our Careers of Tomorrow webpage, and that is montgomerycountypa.gov/careersoftomorrow. And if you have any questions about the event or if you're looking for an opportunity to volunteer to help out with the execution of all of the logistics that go into it, the email on that screen is your go-to for that. And I thank you for your support all these years with from Manifest to Manifesta More to now Careers of Tomorrow. It's an exciting initiative, and it's a great part of what we do.
Ms. Stein, thanks for being here. I always love the Careers of Tomorrow. I love watching the school buses pull up with all the students. A lot of energy there. But I was able to attend the Connections Fair last week for about an hour. And I think that was tremendous, too. I know it was the first one, but there was about a hundred people there when I got there. But I got to talk to some of the applicants and some of the employers as well. And I think that was very well executed and will pay off as well. So thank you all for continuing to be creative and trying to figure out how we can match up, you know, people and their skills with employment.
Thank you.
I was there last week, too. So kudos to you all for planning a successful event. So it was nice to see, and I look forward to October 24th. So best of luck with that, too.
Thank you.
Jane, it's amazing to see how this effort has grown and expanded over the years. I remember back in 2016 with Matt Newfest at Happer-Horsham High School on a Saturday morning, and the kids' parents basically had to bring them there. Now that it's during the school week, as Commissioner Lawrence mentioned, all the school buses and the fact that you reach capacity is really great. So it's grown over the years. And I always encourage local businesses to participate at the employers. And I think it's important for younger generations and high school students to know the opportunities we have across Montgomery County when it comes to employment. And this really highlights that, so another great success.
Thank you very much.
All right, it's time for public comment. Ms. Alt?
I have an objection this morning. My name is Pauline Braccio from Townes and Township. The Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, subsection 701, 716, requires agencies to deliberate and take official action on agency business in an open and public meeting. It requires that meetings have prior notice and that the public can attend, participate, and comment before an agency takes that official action. So it has become clear that the main problem with the Sunshine Act is not the act itself. The problem is that public officials ignore it. Pennsylvania courts have repeatedly permitted the public agencies to ignore the act's requirements. And, there's a lot here, but I'm not going to read it all. Public officials are making critical decisions and committing your money and projects to every day, projects every day. They decide the salaries and benefits of public employees. They decide how much your local taxes are going to be. They decide when it is necessary to commit millions of dollars to a new high school. They decide when and how much to pay to settle a lawsuit. Too often, the public is cut out of the vital discussions and decisions, and it's time to change that. So you have been doing it wrong for years. I've been attending these meetings for six years now, and there are no meetings where you actually have the dialogue. We come in here, you have presentations, you allow us a couple of minutes to talk, and then you do a vote. And actually, we're supposed to be able to comment before that vote is taken. So even though you have public comment, we're still supposed to be able to talk about it at that point because the agenda does not give particulars. Ms. O'Malley comes up here and speed reads and adds details, and that's already after we've come up for our comments. So when are we going to start having meetings that show us your discussions?
Thank you for your objection.
Okay, did you take any note of that? Did you write anything down? Do you want me to email this to you, Ray?
You don't need to. Thank you.
Do you know the Sunshine Act?
Your objection is noted.
All the first person, please.
First up is Kenneth Whelan.
And stop being rude, Ken.
Your objection is noted.
Dr. Kenneth Whelan from Lansdale. I am finishing up my comments from August 17th. So it's to document the concerns of potential environmental, economic, and health concerns for Montgomery County. As a background, again, on February 3rd, 2023, the Norfolk Southern Railroad carrying vinyl chloride derailed near the Pennsylvania border. A recommendation by the hazmat team of Norfolk Southern Railroad, three days after the derailment, was made to burn the vinyl chloride. It was noted that burning vinyl chloride was the fastest way to clear the tracks. OxyVinyl, the company which owned the vinyl chloride, stated that the vinyl chloride on the train was stabilized and not likely to explode. They stated that they passed this information to the onsite emergency team. The East Palestine Fire Chief was given thirteen minutes to make a decision to burn or not to burn, and he was never informed that the vinyl chloride was stabilized. When vinyl chloride is burned, it creates a chemical called phosphine, which was a chemical weapon used in World War I. So the burn actually caused a toxic plume that spread over a ten-mile area. And burning is not the only response to the vinyl chloride. There was a derailment near the Philadelphia Airport in which they just cleaned it up without burning. So therefore, the response of the toxic spill was worse than the actual spill. As far as Montgomery County is concerned, I was informed by officials that they cannot, there cannot be a derailment of a train in Montgomery County because the trains move too slow. Subsequently, the Norfolk Southern Train, the same company as in East Palestine, had a train derailment in White Marsh on July 13th in which the carcinogen tetrachloroethylene was spilled. Recently, I met with the Monco Public Safety Group and was informed that there are no protocols for specific chemical spills, only for category spills, and that the railroad companies have a part of a decision on how to clean the spills. So I'm asking Montgomery County officials to make sure that the action to clean up toxic chemical spills is based on the health and safety of the public and not be subservient to railroad industry interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Giuseppe Monticelli.
Giuseppe Crini-Monticelli, primary Springfield Township, secondary Contra-Hockenborough Commissioners of Montgomery County. I want to talk about here first Item D1, which was the Greater Valley Forge Transportation Demand Management Week. How many people that you go see over age fifty on bicycles? Even, you know, with them being healthy? I just don't see that. Maybe some extreme athletes that are over fifty? Yeah, but you know what I see more of with seniors? I see more seniors using Transnet that is funded by the lottery system and gives them a discount. I'm seeing more of them using that. So we're going to be talking about some really interesting stuff here. We're going to be talking about Moonlighting 101. I never knew you could hold two elected jobs at the same time. Let's talk about the Recorder of Deeds, Jean Sorag. She's the mayor of the borough of Ambler and also the Recorder of Deeds for the county. When she swore to support, uphold, and defend the Commonwealth Constitution and the federal constitution against all MEs, foreign and domestic, I guess she forgot the part about upholding and supporting and defending it. Because what I see personally is I see her not defending that constitution. She is having freelance journalists inside her borough being, let's say, unlawfully detained because they're taking photos and videos of suspected arson building fires. Something needs to change about that. I went ahead and contacted her office. No response. I contacted Joseph Clement. Bring on a suit, he says. Bring on a chapter 21, Title 42, Section 1983 suit, he says. Well, we're going to see about that later on. I mean, that's going to be a surprise if suit comes his way or not for what happened back in 2022 that I tried to resolve. But I don't think someone that is a county recorder of deeds should be holding another elected official position. That's moonlighting. I want to talk about this West Valley Green Bridge Road. You heard me talk about that last time?
Your time is up.
May I ask that the boards hold a vote with no debate if I have an additional minute?
Your time is up.
I have an objection. I would like to, well, I have objection. I would like to renew the objection that has been stated by Pauline Braccio of Townes and Township.
Thank you.
So, and I just want to state for the record here at this meeting, Jean Sorag is one of the finest public servants, you know? We're lucky to have her as the Recorder of Deeds, and the residents of Ambler are lucky to have her as the mayor. If they chose to do differently, they could do that. But Jean Sorag is an absolute wonderful public servant. She does not dim light. She works.
You're not supposed to say you don't respond. I don't respond.
No, that's not appropriate objection.
I can respond whenever I want to respond. And you continue to go, and then we will recess this meeting.
I'm telling you right now, you will not shout from your seat. That is disrespectful. It's out of order. If you do it again, you will be removed from this meeting. That's your one and last warning.
Hold the next speaker, please.
Up next is Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Townes and Township. And I did stand up because I was going to walk up here, but then, you know, him without... up here, but then, you know, him without being respectful of anybody, and no one said anything about Jean Sorg's personality or her character. The issue is she's holding two elected positions at the same time. Now, how can she do either one full-time? How is she getting paid? We have no idea. Okay, that's not privy to us. So there is an issue here. It doesn't matter how good a person you think she is, and with your character, I don't think you're in a position to judge anybody else's, because your character is pretty bad. Going back to what I was saying about not being informed of the decisions that you guys make, because you don't have open meetings. Now, the North Penn School District, they have meetings. They have the finance meeting, all their meetings, which is like five or six a month, are open to the public, whether they're virtual or in person. This is how, what, the $9.5 million Coroner's Office in Eagleville got put through? Nobody knew about it until it was in the paper that you guys dedicated it. And then what about the $90 million to rehab the courthouse? $20 million of which is supposed to be to preserve the historic aspects, but people keep quoting 20 million, but it's really 90 million. The monstrosity over here, somebody, a friend of mine calls it the monument to stupidity, the courthouse, and I didn't see anybody working on it today. Okay? You said, well, you, I don't know if you wrote the letter or not, you're not that literate, but that is not going to be done until 2026? Five years? Well, is that the reason why? Because people aren't even working on it? So now we have 622 million already given, and then Dean D'Orton said that we're getting another 150 million with the bonds to go to capital projects. I don't know how much of that is going to that building. And then we're going to have an $11.3 million per year of debt service, which if you add that up is $203,400,000. And then in those years, in those 18 years, there's going to be more money borrowed as well. So that debt service is still going to climb even higher. You know, this is really to the ridiculous. On the agenda, K1, $141,650 is going to GZA, Environmental of Lansdale. And that is for, to monitor the error? Is that because you want to demolish the prison for no good reason? And there's asbestos in there, so are they being hired for that? Again, there's no details in the agenda. So you want us to come up here and talk before O'Malley reads the details?
Time is up.
And we don't have any option to, to speak about it. Thank you.
Up next is David Morgan.
Good morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler. I've appreciated our mayor and wish her well. I'm not sure about the issue with the two jobs, but I was really concerned last meeting regarding the 100, up to 189 million for a bond, which involves not really clear goals. 150 million apparently goes to capital projects, but I was wondering why, wasn't much discussion about that. And I asked Commissioner Wynder, you're being part of this agreement to just accept it without any discussion. I'm concerned that in the future, are we just going to have more hefty spending going on? Because the 11.3 million per year debt service, which will be created from this, will be all the way up to 2043. So this is getting some new generations having to deal with this debt service. Remember, from the budget hearings, we had a discussion about the 18 million shortfall last December. So to budget and treat our taxpayer money, we, we have to really follow up and watch these meetings that we're hoping to get more detail about these events, so the taxpayers can meet their grocery bills and everything else they have to do. I think this is not going to appear for a couple of years, but there is an eight, 6 million is going to appear in 2024 from the discussion. So maybe we can be more fully informed, define these projects better. Have a town hall about that for many times. Have a tally, how much is being spent on these projects. I know that when you go to the website, you'll see a video which is about the groundbreaking, and it has Council President Derek Perry, plus Dr. Arkush and Commissioner Lawrence and Judge Del Richie. So, and then we get a little bit of a, an idea that it's, it's in front of a part of it that was destroyed. Part of the county area next to the courthouse, I believe, had six courtrooms. If we're looking at a project with three courtrooms on a floor and it's 600 million, it's about 100 million in a courtroom, probably 100 million per floor. So we probably lost then capacity for six courtrooms with demolition. So that's $200 million loss. And then the deconstruction costs. So all these decisions to spend our money in extreme ways, I'm really concerned as a taxpayer and have to speak up for our residents about this. I know that our priorities are important for serving people. So once again, I ask that we really consider, if North Town is benefiting from this so much, how can the homeless perhaps be revisiting at the facility where they were before, which has all the furnishings, doesn't have them subject to misery and the environmental problems of living on the Schuylkill River or something like that? So could that be revisited? And thank you very much.
Up next is Doug Slick on Zoom.
Good morning. I'm Doug Slick, Pottstown. I just want to comment that the vast majority of us who attend these meetings are here to either participate in the county's business or monitor the county's business. And I feel it's an inappropriate forum for hyper-focused personal agenda, attacks on the commissioners personally, and the extreme agenda around how the election was conducted. So I would just implore my fellow citizens to please limit your comments. Two issues that would benefit us all and use another forum to address those more focused concerns. That's all. Thank you.
Up next is Natalie Simonetti, also on Zoom.
Hi, Natalie Simonetti, Telford. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to say thank you so much to those working to help those struggling with substance use disorder in Montgomery County. Thank you for all the hard work you've been putting in, year after year, to make a difference in the lives of those suffering from addiction and those who love them. This is a personal issue for me, since I lost my daughter's father to an opioid overdose 20 years ago. He had severe PTSD from his military service, having served in three different war theaters. At that time, there was still a great amount of stigma attached to addiction disorders, and I advised my daughter, who was eight at the time, to tell people her father died in a car accident, which was technically not a lie, because he overdosed in the car in a parking lot. This is because I didn't want people to put that stigma onto her. So thank you. Thank you to everyone who has worked to help lessen the social stigma of substance abuse disorders. Secondly, once again, I would like to say thank you to the majority commissioners for limiting public comment to three minutes. People abusing the right to public comment have been stealing time away from the rest of their neighbors with frivolous political statements. The fact that these displays are political in nature is proven by the fact that one of the speakers has a sibling on the Sauterton Area District School Board, which also has a three-minute limit on public comment. And I haven't seen Tom DiBello and Liz Berry making campaign videos outside the Sauterton offices, talking about how unfair it is to citizens to limit their public comment. It's gotten to the point where I even feel bad for Joe Gale having to sit there and take it, for goodness sake. Please, let's get back to having more grown-up conversations and less of the clown show. Oh, and as far as people holding more than one office at a time, Donna Scheren held the position of school board director in Sauterton for six months after being elected to the PA House of Representatives, waiting to step down until after the primary, filling her seat with family friend William Formica III with two very concerning tattoos, a three-percenter tattoo and an AR-15 tattoo. So again, the verbal attack against Jean Sorg is purely partisan in nature and should be viewed in that context. Thank you.
That is all for public comment.
Okay. We will now move on to the approval of the minutes for the September 7th, 2023 meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the September 20, September 7th, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. We'll move on to resolutions now. Mr. France, authorization of a short-term planning assistance contract for the Lower Marion School District.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you. I guess the first item I have is for a short-term contract with the Lower Marion School District to produce a school enrollment projection study. This study will look at demographic trends, birth patterns, housing construction, housing sales activity, and other trends in order to create a model that predicts enrollment at each grade level and school building for each of the next 10 years. Additionally, Lower Marion has requested that we consider the impact of full-day kindergarten as a proposed policy switch with their enrollment operations, and so we'll be looking at that as well. This is the eighth study we've done for Lower Marion, who have been a terrific partner in this program. We have done studies for over 14 districts in the county, approximately numbering upwards of 28 total studies. This study, as with all short-term contracts, would be proposed to the school district with a 25% subsidy. The total cost would be $9,555, with the school district's portion of coverage being $7,166, and the term of the contract would run from this month in September to December 1st, 2023.
I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve the short-term contract for community planning assistance, as described by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wynder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Authorization of three funding contracts with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission for Federal Highway Transit and GIS Services. Mr. France?
Thank you again. Each year, the DVRPC passes through federal transportation funds from their work program to each of the five Pennsylvania counties in our region to help fund planning activities. There are three contracts, and for fiscal year 2023 through 24, they are agreeing to provide cash funds to Montgomery County under these three programs. The Supportive Regional Highway Planning Program, with a total of $156,700, the Transit Support Program, with a total of $77,400, and the Regionwide Transportation GIS Program, the total of $26,000. These annual funds underwrite the MCPC's transportation and GIS sections. They pay for transportation staff to participate in regional planning initiatives, like the Long Range Plan Update, the Transportation Improvement Program Update, the Congestion Mitigation Process Update, and more. They also pay for our staff to expand and maintain our county's GIS capabilities and to coordinate with our regional partners. I would note that of those three programs, one of them did increase from last year's amount. These are annual contracts that we usually presented with, and that was the SHRPP Supportive Regional Highway Planning Program, which increased by $15,000 this year. And then I'd also note that the Transit Support Program is the only one of these three contracts and awards that have a local match attached. However, that local match is considered in-kind staff services, so there is no cash requirement from the counties, from the county to accept these funds. In order to receive them, we do need to enter into a contract each year, and the MCPC Board recommended approval of these contracts last week at their September 13th Board.
All right. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize Montgomery County's chief operating officer to execute fiscal year 2023, 2024 contracts as an element of the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission's Planning Work Program, and be it further resolved that all cash reimbursements will be deposited with the county treasurer to the credit in the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. France. Ms. Calder, authorization of a Tefra approval for Masonic Village?
Thank you. Masonic Villages of the Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania operates a facility in Montgomery County known as Masonic Village at Lafayette Hill. It operates as a community care and retirement facility.
In 2013, the Lancaster County Hospital Authority issued a series of bonds to finance projects for Masonic Villages at its Lafayette Hill campus and its Elizabeth Town campus. With respect to the Lafayette Hill facility, the bond proceeds were used to construct a 60-unit independent living apartment building and to make improvements to the existing independent living apartments. Masonic Villages is now seeking to refinance the debt and for Lancaster County Hospital Authority to issue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $35 million. The portion of the project between the two campuses is outlined in your resolution exhibit. And a public hearing was held to allow public to comment on the project on Monday, September 18th, 2023. There were no public comment. There was no public comment, and the Masonic Villages is now seeking your approval.
I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the project for the Masonic Villages of the Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania and the issuance of bonds by the Lancaster County Hospital Authority for the financing of the project. Be it further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal of or interest or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption hereof. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calder. We have some appointments and reappointments. First up, we have appointments and reappointments to the Montgomery County Workforce Board. I will make a motion that Dr. Rithika Arumam be appointed, and Kathy Judge Cordillo and Suzanne Ryan be reappointed as business representatives, and Barbara O'Malley be reappointed as a governmental, economic, and community development representative to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board to serve terms that begin on September 22nd, 2023, and expire on September 21st, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Next up, we have an appointment and reappointment to the Montgomery County Planning Commission. I'll make a motion that Dan Nemiroff be appointed and Obed Arango be reappointed to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for terms to begin immediately and to expire on September 21st, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. It's our personnel section. Ms. Halen.
Good morning. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's Personnel List. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, with a timestamp of 2:00 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the September 21st, 2023 Personnel Presentation, as given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Halen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you. Advertisements, bids, RFPs, and RFIs. Ms. O'Malley?
We have a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for pest control services. Each successful responder will provide pest control services to multiple county facilities, both routinely scheduled and as needed. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, an RFP on behalf of voter services for the election equipment transport. The successful responder will provide for the transport of election equipment to and from the various election districts within the county. Contract will be awarded to the highest-rated responder. Three, RFI on behalf of the Planning Commission for Trail Junction Center Activation Partnerships. Responders will present statements of interest for a potential partnership between Montgomery County and partners to support the activities and functions to be located in the Trail Junction. in the Trail Junction Center in Norristown. Suggested programs, services, operational plan, as well as business models to be included. All partners are welcome to respond, including but not limited to for-profit organizations, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and other entities. Statements of interest to be received and reviewed. All bids and RFPs and RFIs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montco PA dot org slash purchasing.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of a bid, an RFP, and RFI, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. I just want to take a minute to give some background on advertisement number three, on behalf of the Planning Commission for the Trail Junction Center Activation Partnerships. Trailhead improvements were identified and developed as recommendations in the two thousand and twenty Montgomery County Trail Access Diversity and Awareness Plan. This plan was done to better understand and determine solutions to challenges hindering equitable use of the county trails. These trailhead improvements will be one step towards implementing the recommendations outlined in the plan. Trailhead improvements will create a safer and more attractive environment for nearby residents by creating barrier-free access to the Schuylkill River Trail for users of all abilities. The plan also revealed that many Norristown residents were not aware of the trail and/or did not feel that it was safe for them to use. These improvements will create an inviting and welcoming entry onto the trail and an increased sense of community safety and well-being for the residents in the southwestern neighborhoods of Norristown. If there's no more comments, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
Yes. Number one, contract award, assets and infrastructure engineering services, bridge number ten, Woodmont Road over Arrow Creek in West Concha Hockenborough, S.A.I. Consulting Engineers of Des Moines, PA, five hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Contract provides for engineering, final design, construction services, and right-of-way acquisition services for the replacement of county bridge number ten that carries Woodmont Road over Arrow Creek in West Concha Hockenborough. Proposals were advertised on PennDOT's Engineering and Construction Management System and evaluated by county and PennDOT representatives. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Two, contract award, assets and infrastructure, master site plan for Lorimer Park, Stromberg, Garrigan, and Associates Incorporated of Somerset, PA, one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Contract provides for a master site development plan for Lorimer Park, which will facilitate community vision and assessment of future needs for the next fifteen years. RFP two thousand and three hundred and fifty was viewed by sixty-five providers with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Three, contract award, District Attorney, Agency Assessment Prosecutor Center for Excellence of New York, New York, forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Contract provides for an assessment of the District Attorney's Office to identify efficiencies, recommend appropriate staffing levels, and propose innovations that will benefit this agency, the criminal justice system, and the citizens of Montgomery County. Services are proprietary. Four, contract award, District Attorney, System Interface Services, Hexagon of Madison, Alabama, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Contract provides for the interface of the Shot Spotter System to the county radio room. Services are proprietary. Five, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Software, Verdict Software LLC of Morgan Hill, California, thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Contract provides for Verdict Death Reporting Service Annual Hosting Fee. Contract is for a period of one year. Software is sole source. Six, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Virtual Desktop Infrastructure Hardware, Palmeroy Technologies LLC of Hebron, Kentucky, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Contract provides for replacement of the current virtual desktop infrastructure network routers. Equipment and installation services are available through a PA state contract. Seven, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Software, Gimel LLC of Houston, Texas, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Contract provides for annual maintenance and support for the Gimel physical software used by the archive facility. Software is sole source. Eight, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Software, Dropbox Incorporated of San Francisco, California, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Contract provides for one hundred and twenty-five Dropbox Enterprise user licenses for use by various county departments. Contract is for a two-year term. Software is sole source. Nine, contract award, Planning Commission, online public engagement platform, Citizen Lab Incorporated of Claymont, Delaware, sixty thousand dollars. Contract provides for the creation and implementation of Montco two thousand and fifty, a comprehensive plan for a changing world and other projects that would benefit the public outreach process. RFP two thousand and three hundred and forty-three was viewed by thirty-one providers with eight responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of two years with three optional annual renewal terms. Ten, contract award, Planning Commission, Design Services for Trailhead Improvements, NV5 Incorporated of Parsippany, New Jersey, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Contract provides for design consulting services for improvements to the Hall's Avenue and Chain Street trailhead connections to the Schuylkill River Trail in Norristown. Trailhead improvements were identified and conceptually developed as recommendations in the Montgomery County Trail Access Diversity and Awareness Plan. This plan was completed to better understand the challenges hindering the equitable use of the county's trails and develop recommendations to address these challenges. RFP two thousand and three hundred and forty-eight was viewed by thirty-nine providers with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Eleven, contract award, Public Safety, Fencing for the Fire Academy, Geocorp Contracting Incorporated of Hawthorne, New York, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Contract provides for the installation of approximately two hundred and fifteen feet of chain-linked fence at the county fire academy in Concha Hocken. Specification six-five-one-four was viewed by ten providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Twelve, contract award, Purchasing Copy Paper, WB Mason Incorporated of York County, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Contract provides the purchase of copy paper for use by all county offices. Paper was competitively bid by Lehigh County on behalf of the Southeastern PA County's Cooperative Purchasing Board. Contract is for the period of ten-one, two thousand and twenty-three to nine-thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. Thirteen, contract award, Health and Human Services, Community-Based Care Management Access Services of Fort Washington, PA, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Contract provides community-based care management services. RFP two thousand and three hundred and twenty-nine was viewed by twenty-six providers with eight responses received. Contracts for the community-based care management service portion of the RFP only are awarded to the highest-rated responders. Initial contract term is ten-one, two thousand and twenty-three through twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, with four optional annual renewal terms. Fourteen, contract renewal, Human Resources, Web Services, NeoGov of El Segundo, California, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Contract provides a web-based human resource platform with an employee development training portal, performance and talent management, and an applicant tracking system. This is the first of two optional annual renewals. Fifteen, contract renewal, Human Resources, Temporary Staffing Services for county offices, multiple providers. Contract provides for temporary employment agencies to provide personnel services on an as-needed basis as per RFP two thousand and one hundred and twenty-three. Rates vary based on position skill levels. Skill levels include administrative, medical, and election clerk services. This is the second of two optional annual renewal terms. List of providers at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room. Sixteen, contract renewal, Human Resources, Temporary Staffing Services for county offices, multiple providers. Contract provides for temporary employment agencies to provide personnel services on an as-needed basis as per RFP two thousand and five hundred and fifty-three. This is the first of three optional annual renewal terms. List of providers at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room. Seventeen, contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure Engineering for Bridge Two Seven Five in Sheltonham Township, Michael Baker International of Moon Township, PA, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Original contract provided for the environmental studies, preliminary engineering, final design, and construction consultation for the replacement of county Bridge Two Seven Five, Waverly Road over Tacony Creek in Sheltonham Township, as approved by PennDOT. Amendment is for a PennDOT requirement to provide modifications to the proposed barrier to mimic the existing sightlines due to the proximity of the historic properties requiring updates to the previously submitted structural plans. Eighteen, contract amendment, Information and Technology Solutions, Fiber Connectivity, Crown Castle Fiber of Warrenton, PA, nine thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Original contract provided support and maintenance for the county's dark fiber connectivity and ISP services as per RFP fourteen-sixteen. Amendment provides for fiber and ISP services throughout the county, including bringing the new Emergency Operating Center buildings onto the network and monthly fiber service to three-six-five data centers for the Data Center Relocation Project. Nineteen, reimbursement agreement, Assets and Infrastructure, Bridge Two Seven Five in Sheltonham Township, PennDOT, twenty-five thousand dollars. Contract between PennDOT and Montgomery County provides for a funding agreement reimbursing the county for replacement of county Bridge Two Seven Five, Waverly Road over Tacony Creek in Sheltonham Township. Agreement allows for the reimbursement to the county for the additional work needed to obtain Section One oh six clearance from PennDOT and Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission in Final Design. Reimbursement Agreement provides for one hundred percent reimbursement to the county. There is one contract, thirty-eight contract renewals, and five amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of this room.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. You need water? You good?
I'm good.
Words of contract, Assets and Infrastructure, Major Construction Projects.
One, contract award, Air Monitoring Services, GZA Environmental of Lansdale, PA, one hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Contract provides air monitoring services for Norristown area construction projects. Multiple firms solicited through the project enabling list process. Two, contract amendment, Building Lease, Three-Two-Five Sweet Street LLC of Falconwood, PA, not to exceed one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Original lease provided for building space at Three-Two-Five Sweet Street in Norristown. Amendment provides for the lease of additional swing space required to accommodate Phase Three of the Justice Center project. Amendment also extends the lease agreement through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. Three, contract amendment, Construction Management Services, Skanska USA Building of Blue Bell, PA, ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Original contract provided construction management services for design of the Justice Center project, including construction of a new Justice Center facility, renovation of existing court buildings, and renovation and expansion of Hancock Square as per RFP sixteen fifty-nine. Amendment provides for the coordination and integration of asset management software, data management services, and support of Phase Two and Phase Three of the Justice Center project. Four, contract amendment, Asset and Infrastructure Construction Management, Skanska USA Building Incorporated of Blue Bell, PA, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Original contract provided construction management services for the OMP Building Facade Project. Amendment provides for commissioning services, integration of asset management software, and extended construction management services due to supply chain issues for the mechanical upgrades. Five, contract amendment, Assets and Infrastructure Construction Management Services for Eagleville Campus, Skanska USA Building Incorporated of Parsippany, New Jersey, twelve thousand dollars. Original contract provided for construction management services for buildings at the Eagleville Campus. Amendment provides for additional services required due to electrical infrastructure failure.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any board comment? All right, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Motion passes, two to one. Awards of contract, voter services.
One, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions, Network Assessment, RSM US LLP of Davenport, Iowa, one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. Contract provides a threat-focused network security assessment for the current infrastructure of the election network. Services are available through a PA state contract. Two, contract award, Voter Services, Equipment Support, Bluecrest Incorporated of Danbury, Connecticut, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Contract provides ballot processing equipment support for a one-year period. Support services are available through a NASPO cooperative contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Any closing commissioner comments? All right, I will announce the upcoming meeting dates, which is October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'll make a motion to adjourn the September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. We'll move on to the Salary Board. Good morning, Controller Sanchez. Is there any public comment on Salary Board? Okay, then we will move on to the first motion, which is the Salary Board List.
Good morning. Members of the Salary Board, you should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board List. It is a five-page document dated Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a timestamp of 5:30 P.M. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three Salary Board Presentation, as given by the Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Halen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
Ten more.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you. And then next up, we have Salary Board Amendments for the Compensation Study. You're presenting that as well?
I'm going to present the first part.
Okay.
I am pleased to present a resolution to enact the appropriate market adjustments to county employees' salaries based upon a comprehensive evaluation of the county compensation program. The effort began last year prior to my employment with the county. I would like to invite Barbara O'Malley and Tom Bonner to provide details on the compensation update and how it is conducted.
Hello, Salary Board. I am pleased to be here to discuss the resolution, as it represents major investment in our employees and in our residents. Having a trained, experienced, quality workforce is essential for the delivery of our services. Our county services impact all of our residents, from our nine-one-one system, roads and bridges, over one hundred miles of trails, nine parks that receive over three million visitors a year. We provide services and support our residents through our court system, health and human services, commerce, planning, public defenders, district attorneys, and so much more. In two thousand and seventeen, the county updated its compensation model, and at that time, it was recommended that we regularly conduct a market study to ensure our salaries stay competitive within the region. This compensation update and resolution today represents that work. While our salaries were brought to market in two thousand and seventeen, we have seen record vacancies in our county as a result of the pandemic and economic conditions. In two thousand and twenty, three hundred and thirty county employees left the county. In two thousand and twenty-one, it was five hundred and thirty-one. In two thousand and twenty-two, it was five hundred and fifty-two, and this year, we're on pace for four hundred and seventy employees to go off our roles. This represents retirements and other situations. However, we do keep this increase in mind. Our dedicated staff have done tremendous work in making sure critical services continue to be delivered with quality and dedication, even with this reduced workforce. The county was able to do so also with the support of temporary workers and higher levels of overtime with existing staff. We greatly appreciate their efforts. At a time when work from home is becoming the norm, many of our positions require employees to work daily in the office or in the community, often in challenging roles: our nine-one-one telecommunicators, correctional staff, youth center workers, protective services for children and seniors, sheriffs, security, and supervision staff, all working to keep us and our communities safe. These are challenging and demanding roles, and we are grateful for the individuals willing to take them on. But the reality is that it is more difficult to recruit and retain these people, willing to do such complex and difficult work. And we must offer competitive wages to obtain quality employees and keep them here where their experience will benefit all of our residents. Throughout the country in recent years, vacancy rates have increased, in particular for the government sector. We noted that our peer counties either had already or were experiencing increasing their starting salaries for their county positions. We experienced transition of some staff to other counties, and we recognized that we needed to take steps to ensure our experienced workforce remained with us in Montgomery County and that we would be able to fill our vacant positions. With some one-time funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, we were able to offer sign-on bonuses to recruit new employees, referral incentives for our employees, and also provided a mid-year increase to all employees represented and nonrepresented in two thousand and twenty-two. We were also able to provide supplemental pay for some roles that met established criteria. While this provided some assistance, the primary challenge was that our current compensation system was not competitive with its peers. Recognizing this, and to improve recruitment and retention, in two thousand and twenty-two, this board directed senior management to undertake a market evaluation and approved six million dollars in funds to implement the needed market adjustments for our employees. As a result of that directive, we first conducted an employee survey about compensation and employee retention. That survey identified some of the challenges our employees were facing in dealing with high vacancy rates. This survey showed that while employees were happy with their jobs, happy with their colleagues, and very pleased to have the impact they were having in the county helping others, the inadequate pay was resulting in employees seeking employment elsewhere. The survey also established that the peer counties that they identified were The survey also established that the peer counties that they identified were Bucks, Chester, and Delaware as their comparable peers. So we then assembled an internal team to begin the work of updating our compensation program. Tom Bonner, Recovery Office Director and now Deputy Chief Operating Officer for the county, led the team in that effort to update our compensation model. I'll now ask Tom to talk about that process and the results of that update.
Thank you, Barbara. Good morning, Salary Board members. Pleased to be here today to actually be able to say that this is completed. Living document, don't get me wrong, but I think based on the reasons that Barbara outlined, this was actually obviously a critically needed effort on the part of the county. We are fortunate to have support from you, from the commissioners, from all of our colleagues across the departments, especially because they're here today, not just because they're here today, Public Safety or District Attorney's Office, and all of the county departments participated directly in informing this work as we went through it. I want to start simply by saying that this was new as far as the model goes for the county, informed by best practice that's been employed across the multiple departments by having our own county staff, the people that know these systems the best, lead this effort, assisted by professional outside resources through a contract. We have an internal working group team made up of several people, and I'll mention them directly and express our gratitude, that led this work, having been informed by the experience of living with the compensation model that has governed the county for the last several years. We assembled that internal team deliberately to making sure we had experience with county compensation program. That team engaged immediately in their own time in reviewing job descriptions, collecting organizational charts, reviewing all data that comes through, and then managed the process of allowing all of our department heads and all of our hiring managers to update every job description that we had. That work was then passed on to the consultant who was hired through the county's RFP process, funded, as Deputy Chief Operating Officer O'Malley said, with funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. Borrowing one of their words, "They were stunned what we delivered to them on day one." And that was enabled by the vision of this board, by the vision of the management, and the work of the working group, which, right now, I will just simply call out because of the amount of time and effort that was spent certainly throughout the last several months as our Chief Human Resources Officer Katie Halen mentioned. This has been going on since last year. So in no particular order, I would like to recognize those members of the working group that work for the county that participated in this and directly enabling it to be a success. From the Treasurers Office, Bill Caldwell. I mentioned Katie Halen already, our Chief Human Resources Officer. Lisa Herbst from the Department of Assets and Infrastructure. Michelle Jackson from the Department of Public Safety. Jesse King from, we'll say, the Department of Assets and Infrastructure, but also heavily informed by his work with the DA's Office. Michelle Kristofko from the Department of Health and Human Services. Chad Moore from the Controllers' Office. Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley. Isis Park from the Department of Human Resources. Frank Spolten from the Department of Human Resources. Kelsey Rousher from the Department of, well, from Supervision Services. John Sabbath, Magisterial District Courts, and Jane Stein, fortuitously here today. And finally, there are a couple people who helped me manage this work directly. Eli Gilman from the Recovery Office sort of took that coordinator role and made sure that we had everybody on point, shall we say, including myself. Kelly Co. Francisco, who has since departed, was elemental in coordinating survey information and direct communications with all of our staff. That working group team put in hours, I'll leave it there. My gratitude and the gratitude of the county is certainly evident. Very quickly, this work delivers a plan that is adjusted to the market for all of the individual titles. That process was based on first and foremost collecting and organizing the data that the county has within its job descriptions, within its departments, and the knowledge of the people that manage those departments. That data was made accessible to outside entities that then can be used to level into national-level databases to collect market comparables for each title. We also reached out to individual peer counties, our surrounding counties. We leaned on personal relationships, and we collected that data and organized it into a way that we could use all of that together to make that market comparable report that you have as Exhibit A today. We then, using best practice, and again, I can't speak enough, fortuitously informed on the arrival of Catherine Halen as the Chief Human Resources Officer, as far as best practice goes, informed by the consultant's input as far as best practice goes, how to structure a pay structure that acknowledges the market while at the same time in labeling for future growth, successful retention, and successful hiring of new staff and recruitment. We have delivered a program that sees 85% of full-time, nonrepresented staff receive an increase, or about 1,507 people. And again, that increase is independent, although we are very happy to have the work, as Barbara mentioned, of all of those people, but it is because we need to pay our staff in a way that allows us to keep them and to bring in new people. The average salary increase is about 17% across all those employees. As Barbara outlined, this does not today include our represented staff, but we have analyzed those positions, and as that contract process unfolds, we will be working to address those as well. That would represent 527 additional staff members. In all, that represents 84% of the overall staff, full-time staff in Montgomery County that would be eligible for market upgrades through this program. We took into account individual years of experience across the board and applied uniform formulas to make sure that we were being consistent and equitable in how that experience was weighed, and that's what you see before you today in Exhibit A as far as what the overall roster of changes represents. We are, from here, using what we learned, so that work of the working group, as we worked with county management and across the board discovered both strengths and deficiencies in our existing systems. From here, the work is to make sure we have this right, as Barbara mentioned, keep updating our market comparables. That's a central tenet of how our Human Resources Office will operate from here on out, but then also improve those systems and accessory issues and policies and procedures that put us here in the first place. And so that is technological, simply making sure we have the right organizational and analytical databases in our human resources system to do that and our payroll systems, making sure that we have the appropriately uniform policies managed through a uniform office in HR centrally determining Federal Labor Standards Act status. Pay policies, how to recognize experience. That is all work that has grown out of this project. We're not done, but from here, we are happy to say at this point that these salaries represent the market increase that we sought from the beginning while at the same time preparing us for the future. And so unless Barbara has anything else, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, I can't stress enough what it means that this was started, as we all know, we can often say, "Let's just get somebody else outside to do this." We wind up teaching that person a lot. This represented a relationship where we had county staff leading an outside entity. We took advantage of their expertise. They took advantage of our expertise, and together, we wind up in an efficient way able to deliver a robust program. So now I will leave it there. Sorry, thank you for any questions.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table. Is there a motion that the Montgomery County Salary Board approves the adjustment to the salaries of certain employees?
Send it.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. More comment, questions? Well, I have comments. So Barbara O'Malley, Tom Bonner, thank you very much. I know you led this effort. You listed the members of the team. We owe them a debt of gratitude as well. I do want to add Lee Sulteziax's name to that list as well. I'm sure he had something to do with this, I would hope. And I also want to acknowledge all of our department heads and all of our row officers who worked tirelessly on this as well and helped inform the process in discussing the jobs and doing that. And all of the employees. I know we had several surveys throughout this process and always had a very robust participation from our employees on this through the entire process. This compensation study was conducted because we needed to solve a problem. This was not a theoretical exercise. It was a data-driven process to ensure that Montgomery County can recruit and retain the best of the best in all aspects of our job opportunities. We've seen our job postings stay vacant for far longer than we would like. Earlier this year, we had over 100 job openings at the county that were unfilled. That's almost 4% of our total budgeted jobs. We've seen, thanks to some of the innovative recruiting tools like the Assets and Infrastructure Hiring Day last month, we've seen those job openings drop from 110 to 88, a 20% decrease in just a few months. And while I applaud our department for using new recruiting methods and encourage and continue to do so, we also need to ensure that we can retain our employees by offering competitive salaries. We've experienced significant changes in the economy over the last few years. Organizations across the country have had to grapple with worker shortages, changing workplace expectations, and other economic challenges. Our workplace has not been immune to those shifts, and we need to adapt to remain competitive. So the outcome of this compensation study is going to make practical change that will compensate our existing employees more competitively within the region and also allow us to recruit and retain individuals for our open positions. And this will have a tremendous effect, not just on the county employees, but on the public we serve. When we're able to be staffed appropriately, every county employee will be able to do their job better, everyone from our public safety personnel and 911 telecommunications professionals to our janitorial staff and park rangers and security. This will in turn give our county residents a higher level of service, which is something that we should all strive for here at the county. So I'm grateful for the work that everyone has done throughout this process, and I intend to vote in favor of this resolution.
And I'd just like to echo Commissioner Lawrence's remarks in gratitude for all of our hard-working employees across the county who have really been keeping the county on track while we work to fill vacancies. So this great work that you and the working group led was a necessary process, and it's an outcome that is a necessary cost to ensure that our county can offer fair and competitive market-driven wages. Overall, over 1,500 full-time, nonrepresented county employees will receive a salary increase that aligns their pay with the market value of the job title. And I went through every single increase, and it was really impressive, the work that you did there, for a total annual cost of $13.8 million. That is 84.4% of our full-time, nonrepresented staff. 81.4% of our job titles had an increase in pay grade to make them more competitive. What I'm most grateful for is the diligent work of the team you've done to ensure that salary adjustments are equitable, which is important across the organization. Nearly 80% of our staff that are currently making under $40,000 are receiving a salary increase. These roles are essential to keeping the county running, and we are very grateful to the hard-working employees here who are providing excellent service to our public. So thank you again, Tom Bonner, Henley, and everyone else, and the Compensation Study Working Group for all the hard work. I know that it was a labor of love, I hope, and I'm sure our employees will be grateful for it. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate the comments of Commissioner Lawrence and Commissioner Winder, and also just focus on, I know there's been a lot of feedback from the department heads, from the first deputies, from the row officers. I know my first deputy, Tom Landauer, has given a ton of feedback, and I thank you all in the committee for checking that feedback and getting back so promptly. I know it was a ton of information just conveyed back and forth among the departments and across the department. So thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Tom.
Before we go, I'll ask a question. Count at least three votes here. So what will the next step be if this resolution passes?
So this will, once this passes, Ms. Halen's team will work with, actually Karen's team, on payroll to implement these changes effective for the September 30th, effective September 30th paid on the 10th, I need a cheat sheet here.
13th.
The 13th and the 27th of October. So they will immediately go into payroll to be paid on the 13th and 27th, depending on the existing pay schedule. This vote today will allow us to pull all those triggers and make that happen. To Controller Sanchez's point, we are absolutely, we're confident in what we've done, and to credit everyone who provided feedback in a very efficient, I'll borrow her deputy's words, how fast people were able to respond and do this work. But to your point, Commissioner Lawrence, one of the main elements is making sure that, like, as this goes in, we are open to comments and questions from department heads. But absolutely, this will go in effective September 30th for pay on October 13 and October 27.
I see that our district attorney has joined us, and I want to put you on the spot, but before we go, is there anything you'd like to say on this?
Yeah.
There's a microphone.
Thank you. That's how we need it.
I just want to say thank you for doing this. I know this was, a ton of effort has gone into this. I've worked here a long time, and this step that you have done to move this forward is really, really meaningful. The committee, everybody that worked on this to do this, we get to work with some of the most hard-working public servants anywhere, and to have you all recognize that and invest in them means a lot. And it means a lot to me, and I know it's going to mean a lot to my staff. So I just want to say thank you for doing this and putting all the effort into it. It has been done. I know it's not perfect, and there, I'm sure, will be things that we need to tweak, but this is a great, great, not just a first step, but this is a huge, huge step, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. That was it, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn the Salary Board? Did we have one? Oh, there was a retiree acknowledgement. All right, I've gotten, who was making the retiree acknowledgement?
No.
No, there is not, there's not a retiree acknowledgement. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the September 21, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
Send it.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned.